Be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care account, income account. This relates to a new bagging lawnmower for the cemetery. And I guess Mr. Racine is going to supply us with some backup as to how that number, I guess their bid amount or from the state list or wherever they came from.
Yes, he is. He will, he will supply the appropriate backup. He thinks he got it off of the state list.
State list, yeah.
So he will, he said he would supply that to us.
So I'm okay with that one if, I don't know how you feel.
Provided, he provides the material. I'm happy with that.
All right. So I'm going to say provisionally okay.
Provisionally okay.
I agree.
All right. So C-89 relative to the appropriation of $85,301 to the cemetery salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. And he had some backup associated with the communication, but I guess he gave us a further itemization of how those figures were arrived at?
He did. Actually, wait a minute. The 85,301, you're looking at C-89?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on. He did provide additional detail for me. Do you want me to read that into the record?
Sure.
Okay. So the letter states that I respectfully request that $85,301 be appropriated to the cemetery salary and wages account, the same to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. And this is re-laborers $38,252. That is for one full-time person labor staff for the cemetery. Summer help with $29,092. That is two part-time people, less than 1,039 hours per year. Clerical assistance at $16,457. That is a one-time, one part-time office staff person. And clothing allowance is contractual for the total of $85,301. So I'm perfectly satisfied with that.
All right. I am as well.
I am.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's unanimous recommendation on Monday. C-90 is relative to the appropriation of $37,000 to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the library salary and wages account. As trustees, two of us know that that amount results from unspent, obviously unspent salary and wages. The library, the mayor allowed the library to keep this in their budget to buy some shelving that was supposed to be purchased back at the time of the renovation, as well as a copy machine. The copy machine revenue, public copy revenue of seven, approximately $7,000 a year goes into the general fund. So this $37,000 actually does produce some income for the city ultimately.
So it's a net of 30, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm okay with that one.
Just a line item transfer?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So that's a unanimous recommendation. C-91 relative to the appropriation of $17,500 to the Medicare expense account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account prior year. Letter from the mail, I respectfully request an appropriation of $17,500 be made to the Medicare expense account, the same amount to be transferred of the collective bargaining expense account from the prior year. That's all I have with respect information on that.
I need additional information on that.
Okay.
I just, what's it for?
I will, I'll see if I can check on that tomorrow and get some, some additional information.
Thank you.
Next is C-92. This is relative to the appropriation of $282,783 to the FY 2018 workers compensation loss fund insurance expense account, same to be transferred from the following prior year loss funds fiscal year 2017, $55,623.77. Fiscal year 16, $160,000. Fiscal year 15, $40,000. Fiscal year 13, $15,022.54. Fiscal year 12, $10,000. Fiscal year 10, $2,013.646. And fiscal year 9, 23 cents. This is, it happens, I think, each fiscal year.
Yeah.
They close out these accounts because the loss experience is done and they're able to transfer it forward to create a reserve going forward for the current or the upcoming fiscal year. I wouldn't have any problem with this.
Is this, the attachment with the detail is from the treasurer, Mr. LaPlante. So is this related to the, what he was discussing, what he raised earlier with us? I think there was a, is there a mistake with this?
I think that's a separate item.
Is it a separate item?
Yeah. This is, this fund, I guess they used against future cases.
Okay.
And I think a lot of this is in the demolition money so that, you know, when, when someone's hurt, for example, if a police officer is hurt on duty, they've, they've got to pay the medical expenses and that's where this money, that's where this comes from.
Right. And in his letter, he says, "As you may recall, once our insurance company updates us on loss fund reserves, we move the excess lost fund, loss fund balances to help fund the new fiscal year loss fund."
Right.
So that makes perfect sense to me. I'm fine with that.
Traditionally assessed and it moves, the money moves.
All right.
That's good.
So, okay.
So C-92 is a recommendation.
Yes. C-93 is-
Mark, can you just ask one question though?
Sure.
FY '17, how are we already moving money out of there?
Apparently they're recommending that they don't need it. Well, it's not moving, you're moving money out of the account, but you're moving it into the '18 account, so it's not lost. You know what I mean?
Right. So, but there's no, there's nothing pending still for '17?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure there is, but they'll-
But there's still enough?
They'll be, it will go against the '18 account.
Yeah, okay.
So C-93 is relative to the appropriation of $20,000 to the assessors department expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. And the assessors are looking for a computer-aided mass appraisal system upgrade. There's a letter, there's a, the product information is attached to the letter. I've had a chance to look at it, I don't know if the rest of you have. It looks okay to me.
It looks fine.
Yeah.
Good. You're good?
I'm happy to support that, yeah.
C-94 is relative to the appropriation of $80,000 to the municipal building capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. And I guess this is related to the demolition of 222 Mechanic Street. And attached to that is a letter from the mayor, as well as some photographs of the boarded-up building. I mean, this is, building is obviously a blight on the neighborhood and I happen to personally think that this is a really good idea is to remove this type of possible blight. And they're estimating the demolition to cost $80,000. And I'm okay with it. I don't know if you need anything else or-
I'm okay with it, but are they going to put a municipal lien on it in the event that the city gets, can potentially get some of the money back at one point on a sale?
The city already owns it.
Own the building for tax title.
They own the building for tax reasons.
So they, oh, they took it for tax title?
They did.
So the demo would, would also be part of the lien.
Okay. So we sell the land possibly?
Yeah. I mean, or I don't know if it has any other purpose, but it would have to be declared surplus and sold, I guess, at some point. But before that, the treasurer's office would have to foreclose the tax title.
Yeah.
Yeah. In the mayor's letter, he says, "The neighborhood would very much like this building to be demolished because of the density of the area. We intend to leave this parcel as open space, perhaps creating a small pocket park for area residents. Fire Department, Police, Building and Health Department all support this project."
I like the idea of the open space frankly. So, everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
C-95 relative to the appropriation of $20,000 to the highway general expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is for their tank monitor. Apparently they, this is what keeps an eye on whether or not they're having leaks with their fuel station down there. I guess the equipment is antiquated and needs to be replaced and they've got a bid for the replacement of $19,109. That's attached to Mr. Racine's letter. Which includes the equipment and its installation.
Yeah, I think this is fine and especially appreciate-
You certainly don't want a leak.
No, no. And especially appreciate the fact that Mr. Racine included-
Yes.
-the bid.
Yeah.
As an attachment, so I'm fine with that.
Okay. C-96 relative to the appropriation of $200,000 to the sidewalk expense account, same to be transferred from excess and deficiency account. We had Mr. Racine down here, so we know that this is money that they want to use for certain dedicated sidewalks on Nelson Street from North Main Street to Highland Avenue, Washington Street, Day Street, a section of Main Street. I'm okay with it.
Nelson Street's been, the residents have been waiting for the sidewalk for about three years.
Wow.
It's been amazing. They've had a lot of patience, so it's good to see it coming forward. Unfortunately, the Health Alliance is going to participate, but I don't think they stepped up.
Oh, boy.
That's why the value is of what it is. It does tie Highland Ave. into it also.
There's a lot of pedestrian traffic in that area.
Yeah, yeah. Be surprised even on that hill.
You know, I'm going to withhold my opinion on this one, so if you-
All right. I'm just going to put, I'm just going to put a question mark on that one, all right?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
C-98 relative to the appropriation-
Ninety-seven.
I'm sorry, Miss Ninety-seven. Relative to the appropriation of $276,100 to the sanitation drainage expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Mr. Racine was down here discussing this evening the corrugated drainage pipe problem and how this stuff is sort of falling apart, different places in the city. And I guess this is this sort of coordinated program to address, what did he say, five miles of this stuff?
Hmm.
He's got some unit prices attached to his letter.
No, I'm fine with this.
Okay.
Rick?
Yeah, no problem. Yep. C-98 relative to the appropriation of $140,000 to the fire department capital outlay account, expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. And I guess this is for vehicles for the fire department. Two vehicles to be, um-
Yeah, I'm going to withhold my opinion on that.
Are they trade-ins on that for an upgrade or are they going to be handing down the other vehicles?
Uh-
It doesn't specify.
He doesn't, he doesn't say.
No. Usually someone ends up with the leftovers.
Oh, I'm sorry. The current trucks will be reassigned to spare utility trucks that can be used to respond to the deep woodland brush fires.
Oh, good, good.
So that is, so that, I'm still going to withhold.
Okay. All right. I'll put a question mark next to that one.
Yep, for 98.
C-99 relative to the appropriation of $243,000 to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Attached to this is the memo from the superintendent dated April 20, 2017. And I guess this is to address a number of smaller capital items and I certainly would be supportive of this.
Yeah. I'm all set.
Yes, I am as well. Just for, you know, just for the record, it might be a good idea just to read them into the, you know, to itemize. There is an itemized list-
Yeah.
-of what adds up to the $243,000.
Let's see.
Page four.
All right. So the capital funds requests are, let's see, $59,000 for Skyview. And I'm not sure what that's for. It must be-
It's a domestic water booster station.
That's $29,000, right?
Um, yep.
So the $59,000-
Plus the hot, the hot water tank? Oh, that's, the hot water tank is 59.
To replace the tank. So the booster station is 29.
Correct.
The tank is 20, is 59.
That's right, yeah.
High school sewer lift station bypass is 15,000. Northwest Elementary School three-way heating valve, 35,000. Sammaset School air conditioning server for the server room, 15,000. Sammaset fire alarm panel, 25,000. Johnny Appleseed Elementary oil tank removal, 35,000. And the Fallbrook Elementary feasibility study is 30,000 for a total of 243,000.
Yep. No, I think this is, you know, well-deserved, well-earned maintenance. I mean, this is this kind of stuff we should be doing all the time.
Yeah. And well-documented by the superintendent.
Well documented, yeah.
Yep. C-100 relative to the appropriation of $250,000 to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from excess and deficiency account. There's no particular purpose for this money other than whatever the school department wants to do with it. Superintendent told me he would welcome it under the circumstances, so I'm certainly okay with it.
You know, I'm certainly okay with it, but I would like to request that the mayor send down a rationale for this. I mean, it's great, $250,000, but let's be clearer, I think, now rather than later if there's some discrepancy, well, we gave you $250,000 for this and you spent it on that. You know, if there's some kind of miscommunication, let's nip that in the bud and let's just get more detail.
I'll ask.
Thank you.
Yeah. C-101 relative to the appropriation of $5,150 to the planning department expense account, same to be transferred from excess and deficiency. And this is for a copy machine replacement.
You know, I don't have a problem with this, but I would like backup.
Okay.
You know, other departments send, you know, a specific invoice or a specific quote, so I'd like that as well.
Okay. And finally, C-102 relative to the appropriation of $80,000 to the Veterans Services Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from excess and deficiency account. This is to make the entrance to the Veterans Center ADA compliant. I believe it involves the step from the-
And it's going to be handicap ramp.
Yeah.
There's a ramp that goes into the hall, but not into the office.
Not into the office.
So they have to, and the pitch is, I mean-
There's a big step.
The library had to redo theirs and their pitch wasn't even as bad as this one.
Right.
Right.
So remember Mr. Votro was down here and addressed us on that?
He came down, right.
So I'm, I'm going to support this.
Definitely.
Anybody on board? Okay.
Happily.
All right. So just to recap quickly, we of course suspended the budget sewer and water to Monday night.
Deferred, yep, till Monday.
We're provisional on the cemetery expense account. We're going to ask Ray for the little bit back, a backup on that.
Right.
Mark, there was one thing that wasn't clear to me because I was told no, but then I heard yes out of Roger's mouth. When we pass this water and sewer budget, is there by ordinance an increase coming for sewer and water? I know we've done it in the past. Are we in, we out of that cycle now where the numbers are set?
Yep. Yeah, the rate's been set.
I think you said we already, we already-
We're done?
We already did.
Okay. So potentially there might be a rate increase forthcoming, a proposal?
Well, scheduled.
Yeah.
But it's been passed.
Yeah.
Aren't we in the middle of like a three-year rate increase? I think we're probably have one more year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
That's right.
So there shouldn't be like a new increase. People shouldn't be seeing-
We've already voted on it.
We've already voted on it. Exactly.
One, one thing I'd like to see at the end of the day would be an assessment on the inter-municipal agreements we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a good, good thing to know.
You know, I mean, it'd be kind of nice to look at it now, even though they might be in the second or third year of a contract.
Yep. All right. So we're provisional on C-88. C-89 and C-90 are okay.
Yep.
C-91, we're looking for additional information. C-92 is okay. C-93 is okay. C-94 is okay. And 95, 96, we're going to defer. 97 is okay. 98, we're going to defer. 99 is okay. 100's okay, but we want some rationale from the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
101 is okay, but we want some backup from the planning department. And C-102 is okay.
That's right.
I have it straight?
That's right.
Okay. I will endeavor to get that additional information and backup.
Yep.
And we'll take up the ones that we deferred on Monday night, including the budget. And I think a motion to adjourn is in order?
No, no, no. I have a couple things.
Okay.
For tonight's budget hearing, I had asked you about getting a listing of revenue accounts-
Yes.
-from John Richard and I didn't see that.
Yeah.
And also the overlay account.
Yeah. I will call him tomorrow and ask for both of those things.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. It would be nice to have them well in advance of Monday.
You, you asked him for it this evening while we were here too.
I did.
Sue, when you refer to overlay account-
Yep.
-what do you mean by that?
That-
Which account are you referring to?
That is an account when property, when the total property tax base is determined.
Small percentage.
It's a small percentage over that that the city is allowed to collect.
Right.
And that is set aside in an overlay or an account called overlay in case people come forward and want abatements and rightfully get them.
Right.
So that's what pays abatements.
And that money will be left over at the end of a fiscal year.
Enclosed into free cash.
It gets closed.
It gets closed into free cash, yeah.
So it'd be really interesting to see what we're anticipating in that free cash piece.
Yeah. And what the, and what the track record has been. You know, I'd like a history.
Yeah.
You know, four or five years would be very helpful because that's another source of revenue. And the interesting thing, one of the speakers tonight raised the, the revenue question because, and I've asked John Richard for this in the past, most municipalities when they do their budget, they do include all of the revenue accounts.
Right.
And the budget that we get, we see the tax level, we see Chapter 70, and that's really it. A little bit of veterans money or something.
Yeah.
There's a lot of mon, I'm sorry. There's a lot of money, if you go to the DOR, and I'm not sure that that's complete, but they list, you know, excise tax, hotel room tax, and that's $11 million.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we have an accounting of all of it.
Do we, do we see that when it's published as an annual report?
We do.
And it's placed over in the library?
It's on page, the most recent bound annual report we have-
Yeah.
-is from 2015.
15?
16 is being bound right now.
Okay.
Oh, good.
It takes a good year to get it back.
Now, on page 155 of the annual report from 2015, there's a list of the revenue sources from 2014. So it's dated and it actually show, it compares 2013 to 2014.
Yep.
And just quickly to go over it for you, it's charges for services, $21,787,000. Operating grants and contributions, 60, I'm sorry, that's, these are in, these are in thousands.
I was going to say 21 million.
Yeah, no, it's 20, it's, 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 the total is 162,154 for that year.
Right.
How much?
162,154.
That's all revenue sources, including Chapter 70?
I believe so. Yep.
I'd have to look at that.
General, general revenues were 57, or I'm sorry, general revenues, property taxes were 57,545,000.
Okay.
Excise tax, 4,370, that includes personal property and real estate taxes, that 57 million?
Okay.
Personal, I mean, excise taxes, 4,376,000. Penalties and interest on taxes, 333,000. Grants and contributions, not restricted to specific programs, 7,593,000. Investment income, 258,000. Miscellaneous, 1,767,000. Charges for services was in fact 21,787,000. Operating grants and contributions, 66,873, and that's got to be Chapter 70. And capital grants and contributions, 1,622,000.
What's the total?
162,154,000.
Yeah, 162 million, right?
It's amazing.
Right. And the budget, right, that we see is 120?
Yeah.
But even then, it was like 113 or 150?
Right, with everything else coming in.
Exactly. So, you know-
Having a hard time with the numbers.
Absolutely.
But even in the presentations tonight, we're still in finance, so, I mean, I heard 200 layoffs, 120, 70, 150. We're going to get a handle on this.
Well, I think in the material that I saw, the, the budget that the school department passed included 76 layoffs of full-time equivalents. And they had the detail, I think it's 36 teachers and then, you know, a variety of other people, administrators and everything. So I think depending on which budget, you know, ends up, depends, whichever budget you're discussing, you know, there's a corresponding, I think, number of layoffs. That's my understanding and that, that's what I was trying to establish is, okay, here are the three scenarios. Here are the reductions that are currently attached to each.
Right.
And I think they're still working on that, right?
Yeah.
So-
They won't, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to take them into through July to figure it out, once the budget's passed. One concern I have and was raised tonight during the meeting, you responded, John had a difference of opinion.
Oh, yeah.
And that is if the city was forced, whether it's for three months or for, or a longer period of time, to go to the 1/12 budget, how would that affect spending? And according to John Richard in a conversation with him, he feels confident saying that approximately 30% of the money for the fiscal year is spent in the first month. And he used, for example, like the Recreation Department as an example-
Mm-hmm.
-where they're really top-heavy in the summer with all the programming they do-
Yeah, yeah.
-and then things get a little lighter during the year. But I think, I think my concern would be, one way or the other, I need to have that qualified for Monday night on the Finance Committee because, you know, that plays into the decision we have to make to the council on what we're going to recommend for the overall budget in general. Because school is tied in with the budget, it's not a separate vote, is that correct?
You can, according to my sources, and I've been going back and forth with DOR about this and I'm happy to share that information.
Yeah.
You can, this council can reject a part of the budget, all of the budget, specific line items. So we could carve out the school department budget.
Carve out the school department budget.
Absolutely. And-
But if we reject it, that's-
Reject that.
In a sense, we are, okay, I understand.
Then it's back to the drawing board. But the city side would still-
But that doesn't affect the other side.
It doesn't affect the city, no. Then there still exists, the city budget still exists.
Can you get that for Monday night?
I will be happy to forward it to you.
Yeah, just have, yeah.
Absolutely. And I'll have it here, yeah.
Yeah, my, my-
I'm sure that question's going to be raised on the phone, whether it's us or someone.
Absolutely.
The painful part is that if, if we reject the school budget, then, you know, the question was asked to the superintendent, now what? So, yeah, July, you know, there's not, you know, they're not spending a lot of money in July, but once August hits, they're in trouble.
Right. Well, the other part too is if we're trying to negotiate a couple million dollars for the, for the difference, it necessarily is not going to happen. We can't make that happen down here.
No, well, we can't make it-
So it still remains bad number.
We can't, we can't force it.
Right.
I mean, I, I think, you know, having public input tonight, Monday night, hopefully has, you know, it helps. But, I mean, we don't have to, we've reiterated this ad nauseam, we can't appropriate the money. So it's stuck.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I spoke to the superintendent. I mean, I know, you know, he's in a, he's between a rock and a hard place. So, we are too.
Well, it's not just the superintendent. I mean, we hear over and over again, you know, it's, it's everybody throughout the city.
Sure.
It's anybody that represents kids.
Yep.
So, you know, the superintendent certainly is the, you know, the lead actor, but, you know, it really impacts everybody. It impacts everybody's home values. I mean, that's why I'm stunned that people don't think more about that. I mean, people that don't have kids in the school system, I don't have kids in the school system, I, you know-
Yeah. Chilbury Public Schools, they can't even deal with the growth. It's just so incredible down there, just because of this, how strong the school system is. They're one of the gold schools in the country.
Of course.
And it's just amazing, the people that are moving in, professionals that are moving in, you know.
You don't see that in Lomestorick.
They're close to the medical industry down there, right.
Yeah. But we're not seeing that.
No.
You know, we just did a, I mean, I'll talk more about this, I think, on Monday. Strategic Plan for Jennings. And part of that, the consultant did a, an environmental scan and looked at the demographics and the different changes in the population. That's an eye-opener and a half.
Yeah.
And I'll bring that down and share that on Monday because we're a gateway city.
Yeah.
Think about that.
Yeah.
So, on that happy note, are we ready to adjourn?
I'm ready if you are.
Okay.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I don't even know what time it is. What time is it? I don't even know what time it is. What time is it?